Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to the October 20th Post Falls City Council meeting. We did have a workshop prior to the meeting. We toured the work going on out at the water reclamation plant. It's part of the, gosh, eventually we'll be close to $100 million project to update and renovate, so thanks for the tour, it was very informative. Clerk will note that all council members are present. And ceremonies, announcements, appointments, presentations, I do have a couple announcements. City elections are November 3rd. There are three seats up for elections, seats 1, 3, and 5. If you missed the Meet the Candidates broadcast, it is rebroadcast on Sunday, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday on Channel 13 or 97.103. It is also available as video on demand on the city website. The city annual residential fall cleanup is scheduled for this Saturday, October 24th. Post Falls sanitation will be doing a citywide pickup for one day only. Items must be placed at the street by 6:30 a.m. Check the city website for details on size and type of items they will pick up. And next up is introduction of new police officers. Chief Hoag.
Mayor and council, good evening. As is customary when we get new officers, I'd like to take a minute and just introduce them to you and to the community. And we have two new Community Services Division officers. And I'd like to tell you just a little bit about them. To my right here is Will Long. And Will Long is a retired FBI special agent with over 25 years of service. He graduated from Northeastern Louisiana University with a criminal justice major in 1986. From Mississippi College School of Law, he graduated in 1989 and started with the FBI in the fall of 1989. He transferred to Coeur d'Alene Resident Agency of the FBI in 1998. In the FBI, Will specialized in narcotics, violent crimes, fugitives, and extremist group investigation. He was assigned to the North Idaho Violent Crimes Task Force and the Inland Northwest Joint Terrorism Task Force based in Spokane. He was also an FBI SWAT team member and leader and law enforcement trainer for his entire career. Will also served two FBI assignments in Afghanistan, 2006, 2011, and he graduated from the FBI in June of 2014. So Will brings a lot of experience to the department, we're proud to have him. And next to Will is Alan Huggins. And Alan started with the Post Falls Police Department in April. Prior to the Post Falls Police Department, Alan spent over 27 years at the Costa Mesa Police Department in Southern California where he retired as a captain overseeing field operations. He has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and is currently on staff at the North Idaho College Police Academy where he instructs on police ethics, patrol procedures, and community policing. In addition, Alan also does consulting work in his off time where he provides consulting on personnel issues. So I'm pleased to introduce both of these gentlemen to you. Again, we're very proud to have them both on our team, working in our Community Services Division.
Welcome. Welcome, gentlemen, and it's good to see that the quality of the police force we have sure didn't go down with the addition of you two, so thank you very much, very accomplished. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
There are none tonight, sir.
Any declarations of conflict? Seeing none, would you please present the consent calendar?
Tonight's agenda is Item A, minutes, April 6, 2015, City Council meeting. Item B is payable September 29 through October 12, 2015. Item C, Street Division surplus and trade-in of a 1991 Class 8 15-yard tandem dump truck and purchase of a 2016 Class 7 single axle dump plow truck and spreader. Item D is Montrose, 8th edition, final PUD, final PUD supplemental agreement.
Any questions on the consent calendar? Seeing none.
I'd move to accept the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Motion second for the discussion. Clerk, please take the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Hisong?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Tonight, we have two public hearings. The first is on the Reban annexation and the second is on Quad Park, zone change. If anyone wishes to speak on either of these items, there are forms at the Diaz's, please fill them out and turn them into our clerk. And with that, we will open the first public hearing dealing with the Reban annexation. Name for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Tavis Schmidt, Planner with the City of Post Falls. I'm presenting tonight the staff report regarding the Reban annexation, which is case file The parcel is located at the corner of Grange and Maguire. There, it's the old Grange building. The surrounding zoning is R1S in the area, and then the city limits is there just along Maguire. And to the west of the city limits is the county property, it's County Ag Suburban. The subject property is about a quarter acre in size. The current land use is kind of a residential community facility use there. The applicant is proposing single-family suburban zoning, which is the R1S. Surrounding land uses, it's residential, developed in the area within the city limits, and then to the west is the Cootney County Agricultural Properties. Water providers, East Green Acres, and the City of Post Falls does have sewer available to the parcel. So the applicant's request is to annex the approximate quarter acre parcel within the city limits of Post Falls and designate the parcel R1S, single-family residential suburban The planning department within Public Services, it's within the Post Falls City of Area Impact, Area of City Impact, excuse me. It's contiguous with the current city boundaries and it provides a logical extension. It cleans up the western boundary along Maguire there, because this is just a small parcel that kind of is a little blip along the city limits there. Public noticing procedures were followed. The pedestrian network is all in place. When the surrounding subdivisions were developed, sidewalks, curbs, gutters, right-of-way was all improved and put in place. So there's no further network that needs to be installed. Annexation will require sewer connection. There is sewer on the adjacent property, and the proposed annexation and zoning meets the intent of the comprehensive plan. In Planning and Zoning Commission, there was some question regarding that this is a quarter acre lot and the R1S requires a one acre minimum. The applicant owns the adjacent quarter acre lot that is kind of in an L-shaped, immediately adjacent to it. So their intent is to, upon annexation, to merge the two parcels together to create an approximate half acre lot there. Additionally, within the Post Falls Municipal Code, it actually says that non-conforming lots that are, that there's going to be a structure erected, and if the owner owns both of them, that the two parcels for building purposes will be combined to more further meet the intent of the zoning code. Engineering comments, frontage improvements have been done, there's no adverse impact to the city's transportation system, sewers available, water reclamation facilities have capacity to provide that. We received no other comments from any outside agencies. I would like to invite the applicant at this time to come up and speak.
My name is Rick and my wife is Shawn Reben. And right now, we are currently at 7827 Volta Lane in Coeur d'Alene. And we purchased the property intent to basically just create a single-family dwelling. The Grange has a historical factor, so it was kind of interesting to be able to restore the Grange and make a shop out of it, and which the square footage allotment for construction would still allow us to build, excuse me, a single-family dwelling next to the Grange with the half acre as a R1S. So that's basically our intent.
Great, thank you very much. And you had stated earlier that that was a staff report, so do you have more to add for staff?
Nope, at this time, I'm done at this time.
Any questions of either party? Thank you very much. Is there anyone wishing to speak?
We have none.
I would assume that you probably don't care to rebut anything that you've said, since there's no questions. With that, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, how would you like to add?
If nobody has an objection, I would move to approve the Reban annexation file number
Second.
Motion second for the discussion. Seeing none, Shannon, please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Hisong?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion carries, but Counselor?
Just had a question, I may have missed it because I was taking a note. Did you also designate the zoning on that with your motion?
I would amend to have the zoning be R1S.
Second.
Motion second. Thank you, John, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll again, please.
Hisong?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Good news, it's passed again. Thank you very much, John, for pointing that out. Next public hearing is the Quad Park Zone Change. Open the public hearing. Mr. Manley.
Yes, Mayor and City Council, John Manley, Associate Planner with the City of Post Falls, introducing the proposed Quad Park Zone Change, case file ZC-15-02. The owner of this property is Louis Fasano, and the applicant's representative is Tri-State Consulting Engineers, which is present this evening. Requested action is to review the proposed zone change from limited commercial, that's the LC zoning designation, to multifamily residential, R3, and approve the proposed zone change. The R3 zoning designation would permit multifamily as apartments up to 18 units per acre, but potentially if they did a townhome type style, 21 units per acre. The project location, as you see here, is the southwest of Cecil and 12th Avenue. The surrounding zoning is, to the east, R2 zoning, of which directly east, there's currently some fourplexes that abut the proposed zone change. To the north is a County Ag Pocket with a church at this location, and just to the west is R2 zone properties that currently has duplexes located. To the south, we'll go back to the prior picture, you can see that that limited commercial zone property is mostly undeveloped at this point in time. To the south, you have significant amounts of commercial that's being developed and currently exists with Walmart, you have a lifecare center, and then just to the east along Highway 41, various commercial type development and industrial type production The property size is about 8.25 acres. The current use is it's an abandoned softball field. Water provided would be Ross Point Water District with the sewer being provided by the City of Post Falls. So at this time, it would conclude staff's introduction of the project.
Questions of John at this point? Thank you.
Wait. Mr. Mayor, this might be a good time to check and see if anyone's had any ex parte communication on this matter.
Okay, I was going to read it during the public comment. Do you want to do it now?
Either way, I just didn't.
Let's do it. Shannon's got the information, so let's do it during, as we start bringing up public comment. Thank you.
Very subtle.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. It's been a while since I've been in front of you, so I welcome myself back. I'm here on behalf of a...
Could we get your name, please?
You're right, I'm sorry. Steve Circle, Tri-State Consulting Engineers. My address is 1859 North Lakewood Drive, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. I'm the engineer for this project. I work for Tri-State Consulting Engineers. And I'm here on behalf of my client, Mr. Lou Fasano. And they simply just want to change color of the map. I think P&amp;Z has a recommendation before you tonight, and I certainly support that. I support the staff report here today, and they feel that if they could change the zoning, that it would certainly benefit the community. I think this is infill development and it's better suited with our requested zoning. So I would stand with any questions that you might have, but I don't have any conflicts with the staff report.
Any questions of Mr. Circle?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Once again, we went over the surrounding zoning for the area. This was a premise for most of the staff analysis within the staff report. The R3 zoning designation would be an appropriate transition for the area. Staff looked at some of the undeveloped, they mentioned undeveloped lands in the area, as well as the adjoining uses, as the proposed use would be compatible and potentially could help facilitate some other future development in that area. Title 1816.010 speaks of the, basically the criteria for looking at zoning districts. As an excerpt, zoning is a sign following the consideration of the street classifications, traffic patterns, existing development, future land uses, community plans, and any geographical or natural features. In looking at this, it was determined that the street classifications being Cecil and 12th would be compatible for and would be, would help facilitate an R3 proposed or an apartment project of sorts at that location with the proposed density, as well as being compatible with the existing uses and future land uses. It was determined that there's really no natural or geographical features that would come into conflict with the proposed zone change. The proposed zone change of R3 from limited commercial would meet the policies found in the comprehensive plan. The staff report, you can see there was more of a detailed analysis of how it's compatible. Also, when looking at zone changes, you look at, within Post Falls Municipal Code, the 1820-100 Amendment of a zoning map. That amendments to zoning map should be in accordance with the future land use map and the goals and policies found in Post Falls Comprehensive Plan, of which was established. Also, within the state code pertaining to zone changes, no zone change should be in conflict with the comprehensive plan or be in conflict with the delivery of services of any political subdivision, and in not be in conflict with any of the delivery of services by the school district, none of which were found to be in occurrence. With the engineering division's review, is that the transportation elements of the project are acceptable as presented. With regards to the water reclamation, the current facility has the capability and capacity to serve the project. And with domestic water, it would be provided by East Green Acres. I believe that's a typeal, that would be the Ross Point Water District at that location. Post Falls Police Department has reviewed this and found no concerns with the proposed zone change. At this time, I would stand for any questions you might have for me.
Questions of John?
I've got one question. John, do you have a ballpark inventory of apartments available or projects that have been approved for apartment-type projects?
I don't have off the cuff the actual inventory of where we're sitting for inventory of what's proposed. I do know that in the last Cootney County assessment from the real estate forum was that we're at 1.8% vacancy rate. I've also heard actually that's reduced to, I haven't seen a report of it, but sub 1%. So as far as the vacancy rate, we currently have a high demand for it, of which was in the staff report, but, so I apologize if I don't have that.
That's really what I was looking for, is just, you know, we always hear, when we hear a project like this, "We don't need, we don't need." You know, I always like to know, well, do we or don't we? If we got any kind of information whatsoever. So to say that we've got a 1% vacancy rate tells me that it's probably a product that is needed.
And I would presume if the vacancy rates start increasing, that the proposed apartments are going to naturally decrease, it's just going to follow the supply and demand of the market.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions?
Well, the limited commercial services, in the packet, it says something that that designation doesn't exist anymore or something. What is that exactly?
No, the limited commercial does still exist. It's a current zoning. The only two that aren't would be, we have a heavy industrial that no longer exists, and we have an RMHP that nobody can really, I mean, they exist, but nobody can apply for new zoning districts of that allocation.
Because I read some of the packet, that confused me, you just answered the question, so thank you.
Thank you, John.
Right, thank you.
Shannon, anyone wishing to testify? We have no one wishing to testify, however, to keep our attorney happy, we did receive some ex parte communication, meaning that the information came in after the...
Outside of the public hearing.
Outside of the public hearing. So it basically, since it came in after the fact, can't be considered, will be part of the record, so, just so you know. And that was from Scott Leslie. So we do have that information and it will be in the record, so just so you know that. No one wishing to testify? Any rebuttal of what you said? With that, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, how would you like that?
Quietly, I would say. I think this is a real good use for that property, and what makes it, makes me comfortable with it is the fact that we have R1, R2, and now R3, and then to the south, we've got commercial. So I think it's, I'm not always in favor of apartments, but when they are surrounded with appropriate buffer, where we don't have R1 up against R3, I think it's perfect, and it's rare that we get one that fits quite this well. So I would definitely be in favor of the zone change.
Anyone else?
It's a lot better than an empty softball field.
Bless you.
I would move to approve the Quad Park Zone Change file number ZC-15-02, and I would also like attached to that the facts and conclusions of the staff report.
Second.
Motion second for the discussion. Seeing none, Shannon, please take the roll.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Hisong?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you very much. Next item up is unfinished business, we have none. Following is citizens' issues. This section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council regarding a city-related issue that is not on the agenda. In order to ensure adequate public notice, Idaho law prohibits that any item requiring council action must be placed on the agenda of an upcoming council meeting. Comments related to future public hearings should be held for that public hearing. Repeated comments regarding the same or similar topics previously addressed are out of order. We ask that you not continue to repeat. People wishing to speak will have five minutes, and I am fairly certain, I know why a large portion of you are here tonight, and please know that we do want to hear from you. The council can make no decisions, as it is not on the agenda, so it is public comment only. We ask, we will treat you with respect. We ask that you treat everyone else with respect as well. We ask that proper decorum be followed. We ask for no cheering, no applause. This isn't a ballgame, so let's keep the decorum as it should be. And again, we will respectfully listen and hear what you have to say, so please engage us with the same courtesy. Name for the record, please.
My name is Taj Wilkerson and I live at 1606 Bob White Lane. And I'm going to need just a second here. John, I may need your help for just a second to get that one focused again. Or I actually did it perfect this time, huh? So, good evening. I want to reiterate a couple things here real quick. I did grow up here in Post Falls, and so there's a couple things I kind of want to bring up. I do currently live in Fieldstone. Growing up here, obviously, Post Falls has changed a lot. Many of us have been around here for a long time and have seen those changes in Post Falls. And one of the things I wanted to kind of address here a little bit before I get started is, we all accept that change can and will occur in each of our areas as a community. If it doesn't change, that means we're not adapting. Normally, our change is going to be for the better. And some of our best changes that we do must be done with both foresight and hindsight. In essence, we must learn from the best and worst of our past to make our future the best possible. In the future, we also must create a path which shows how we got there. And that basically allows us in the future to establish things that, now that we're not only usable in the, that we're going to use in the future, but also be able to identify how we got there. And some of those things, we've developed through a complex series of laws and everything else. We could sit and have a debate over how we create those, but that's not what I'm here for. Well, many things have changed in Post Falls over the years. Some of them have been good, some have been bad, and some things are controversial at the time and later become acceptable. And I do agree that there is a lot of change in Post Falls, and I think everybody here would agree with that. In that, I am one of the elected members of the Save Our Subdivision to be a representative here tonight. I'd like to draw your attention to the item at the Prairie Crossing known as Fieldstone. The area is located generally east of Idaho, west of Greens Ferry, and north of Poline. The area was developed prior to many of you being part of the council. Some of you were on the council or involved, it's changed so much over the last couple years. The final approval was in 2002. The development was met with objection, and as a matter of record, I myself objected to the development due to lack of green space in a trail system. That was subsequently addressed. Members of the council, you can go back and look at the minutes, actually discussed that. It went back to the developer. Developer agreed to add some more green space that was in there that met with our current area. One of the things I will bring up though, is one of the ironic things out of that development, that was the first and only time the Post Falls School District has ever objected to a development being put in. And subsequently, there was additional land that was added for future elementary school, which we're currently building. So I'd like to move forward to the last several years. Many of the people bought in the area with the understanding the apartments would not be built in the area intersecting the area near Poline and Saronga, though it was listed as being cluster housing, which would include duplexes, triplexes, and other potentials that are in there. Viking Homes brought in a request in 2007, which added Saronga Gardens, which is to the west of Saronga, just north of Poline there. A little bit later, they brought it back in and initially started as a 55 and over community. They initially brought it in as that. It wasn't working, so they brought it in as single-family homes. In the first part of this year, they brought a new proposal in to propose 208 multifamily units in the area there at Saronga and Poline Avenue. The address that I would like to put into that area is that, one of the things, the general area is zoned R1. We have talked with city staff, they said it does meet in the PUD there. My objection would be there is, I don't understand how R1 is R3 and becomes R1, but that's something that I, we've addressed to them. Many of the homeowners were not aware of public hearings. A lot of times, you're going to hear people say in the council that, come to these hearings, well, they're not posted. They're on the internet, they're in a paper. People don't look for those every day, so they don't find them. For example, you probably don't know they're wanting to put a paintball field in up off of Greens Ferry Road here in the next couple months or something like that. So there's several things that are in there. What I would say is necessarily what we did in 2002, we've had 13 years to put this together and look at it, and I don't think we've necessarily accomplished everything. I think the review process didn't go properly, where you didn't get the input. And what I would tell you is that I have 219 signatures in front of me right here of people that oppose this. That's a pretty high number of people opposing something that passed both the Planning and Zoning Commission and the council. So what I would ask in the future is that we have the ability to have a hearing and also be able to stop the project or put a pause on this project, so we can get better communication, not only with the developer, but with the city, and actually design something that fits in. The other part is, we don't have any three-story structures anywhere in the north end of the city, so basically, you're talking about the tallest buildings in the whole city are going to be on the north end. And I'm out of time, thank you. And I'm out of time, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, you're next. Name for the record, please.
My name is Susannah Graham, I also live in the Fieldstone Development. I guess the one thing that I would implore upon you is that these people have been defrauded. We all are, we looked at maps, we were given maps on the wall, colored pictures of what Viking construction in Fieldstone would look like into the future, what would be there, and there are people with definite pictures and color photography of what was shown to them by Viking construction, and this is not it. Our American system of justice mandates that there is boards, city councils, we're also entitled as citizens to due process, that's notice and opportunity to be heard. What was appropriate in 2001 is not appropriate in 2015. I'm sure that you as councilmen and women have gone through 41, and you wait three lights through to try to turn onto Pole Line, and now you're telling me you're going to add 600 more residents into that area? We are creating an absolute nightmare with regard to infrastructure. On a more important note, we have an older age community, 55 and older, that was not told that there would be apartments, and they're directly across the street from Saronga, they've been taken advantage of. You are elected, I think that we're entitled to a hearing on this issue, we have made some progress with regard to hiring our own planner to investigate and see if the proper procedures were provided. We found out on September 28th, 2015, that that would be apartments from our homeowners' association meeting. Since then, Viking construction, who I think was not honest with the residential community, has gone to the races with regard to their developmental efforts, because they know they're going to get caught. They know these citizens have pictures of what was promised to be in the residential area. They know what it was zoned, and they want to get moving as fast as they can, so that they can get this done before the lawsuits hit with people that were defrauded by them. You're elected to protect the citizens, and I would ask for a hearing also. Thank you.
Next, is anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi, my name is Linda Irvine, and we just purchased our home in Fieldstone eight months ago, we're not informed of, of any zoning changes, but I just have a comment, was there an impact study of the traffic that's going to be exiting onto Saronga Avenue? It is a, a circle, and it's one lane, both directions, and that's my question for the council, was there an impact study done on traffic there? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak? Sir?
I'm sure most of you remember, or should remember anyway, the original hearings on this particular development, several people spoke against the development to begin with, but that particular area there was supposed to be commercial, mom-and-pop type store. I was just reminded of this a little while, a little earlier tonight, and there was nothing about high-density apartments. And a lot of these folks have moved here since that was originally approved in 2002. How they were supposed to know that Viking had that option, one way or another, just doesn't sound right. I would encourage the city to please give these folks a hearing, and remember what I've said at many a meeting here, high-density housing like this does not belong, in my personal opinion, in the city of Post Falls. It just doesn't belong here.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Anyway, ma'am.
Thank you, my name's Lori Verden, and I live at 2570 Sparrow Loop. I bought my home from Hallmark Homes, as difference from Viking, but we have the same map and the same story. We were told that it would be commercial, or it could also be multiplex homes, like duplexes, maybe patio homes, something along that level, which was perfectly fine. We didn't find out about this apartment complex until at our HOA meeting. To me, it's, it's, it's three stories high. I don't know if any of you have seen the field, but you should drive by. It's a little bit larger than a football field. You're going to put eight buildings on that field with 24 apartments each, 208 units, three stories high. Not only are they three stories high, but as I drive by there every morning, the construction crews are adding piles and piles of dirt. So my assumption is that the first level is already going to be one level ahead of all the houses that are already there. Piles and piles of dirt they're bringing in. Why, the ground has already been improved years ago, it was already ready to be built on. They're increasing the level of the land already, plus three stories, plus apartments typically have a very high peak roof. 208 units, approximately three to five residents per unit. How many students is that being introduced per view a month or three? Those students in that district are already being bussed to Ponderosa, if I understand right. You're going to add 400, 500 more students? Can that school handle that? Did anybody think about that? You have a turnabout right there for the traffic flow. All that traffic is going to be coming out onto Saronga, as that other woman said, and it'll be going around the turnabout, and you know how everybody's doing good with that, you know? Plus, that's just more buses in that area, and the bus is hard to maneuver, the turnabout. Doesn't make it any easier for the buses to go through the subdivision, they've got a turnabout to get around in there too. And if you have the kids waiting on the inside, kids being kids, they do do damage to the property fences. We can all talk to our kids, but can we talk to the kids of the people in the apartments? There's a lot of other issues, there's 415 parking spaces? If you take 208 units, most, most families have two cars, if they have people come to visit, where are they going to park? They're going to park on the side streets. One of our big rules on our HOA is there's no street parking. So we have no repercussion to get these people not to park on the street. What in the winter, when the snowplows come, we have no way to tell these people not to park there, and our streets won't get plowed. It's not fair, and you think about the high impact, that's a possibility of 1,000 people. If everybody, if every apartment had five people, two parents and three children, living in that apartment, that's a possibility of 1,000 people in one little small area, in a residential area. The new apartment you propose tonight over at the old baseball fields, that's an excellent idea, lots of parking, there's, there's good access on all those streets there, there's not a high impact, that's a great place for an apartment complex. But right in the middle, right at the front entrance of our subdivision, it's not a good place. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Kubali, I've lived in the Fieldstone Apartment Complex for about three years now, oh, don't mind the name tag, nickname. My husband and I bought this property with hopes to raise our children here, we don't have any yet, it's such a wonderful community, and to see something like this happen without any kind of repercussion or due process, it kind of puts a sour taste in our mouth as to living in Post Falls and making this part of our community. I just wanted to put that out there, it's just difficult to see so many people defrauded in such a nice little neighborhood, and it's kind of hard to think about raising my kids there and building our home when, from my own house, I'm going to be able to see my view now, instead of the sunset is going to be an apartment complex. So, that's all I got.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir?
Good evening, my name's Larry Walden, I live on the fresh drive around the corner. Understand that over time, when a development is developed, it goes up, gets up to about 30 years, and everything starts to fill it out and fill it up, and everything is just about perfect. And then after about 20 years, it starts going back downhill again, until you get to an area where you have to redo the whole area. Now, what you want to do is you want to bring that from 30 years down to 10 years. You put something like that in up there, you're going to have nothing but a mess, a lot of traffic, a lot of people unhappy, houses going up for sale, prices, prices of the houses are going to drop in value, you know this as well as I do. The interest that you, the city has, of course, is tax base, you're looking at the tax base that you can get from that property. Okay, there might not be much that we can do about that at the present time, but I talked to a very smart and intelligent person, he came up with a brilliant idea. If that goes through, I would like to see you put in all the areas around there gated communities, put the gates up, keep the people out of the areas that we're living in, keep it the way it should be, let them take the streets down to the high schools, the grade schools, whatever. Oh, by the way, where's your middle school at? I haven't seen one of those around here yet, I've been here for two years. Okay? You're building two, you got two elementaries, you got a high school, but I don't see no middle school. So if you could just clean up that act up there, put in some gated communities, and go that way, you may have some, catch you later, I'd like you for the time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Thank you very much, folks, please let me thank you for the way everybody presented, sincerely appreciate it, I know when something like this comes up where folks are, get emotional about it, and it means a lot to you that sometimes emotions can run high, and I think that's normal, and again, I want to thank you for the professionalism and the courtesy that you showed, so thank you very much for your time. Thanks, Joe. No problem. I've got to share a computer because mine died. Next item up is new business, acquisition of land for the softball complex. Who's presenting it?
It almost seems appropriate that the day we're talking about new softball fields is the same time we see Quad Park go away, so maybe that's a sign. I don't know. At the last council meeting workshop, we had a chance to discuss the proposal of obtaining 25 acres of land through a trade of development of Tolemore Park. Tolemore Park would go in, the city would just take on, my department, a portion of that construction. Since that time, you did receive the information, the PowerPoint, another memo that outlined costs and figures, so tonight I'm just here to answer if there's any other questions, and then also to ask the council to allow us to go forward and negotiate an agreement with the developer. So, I'm open to any questions you might have.
Any, is there something you're going to show us here, Shelley, or?
I was just going to have him move it so the light wasn't shining on it, so you could actually see.
Questions today, of input?
I guess my only input is that, I appreciate the numbers, and there's clearly a shortage of sports fields in Post Falls, it's, especially as we continue to grow, it gets more and more obvious that we need more places for kids and adults alike to play. Of course, then I see the price tag, and stomach jumps into my throat, so I think we need to take advantage of opportunities for, it's kind of a subsidized land acquisition, I guess. But my question is, does this, going forward with this, this land swap, for example, doesn't obligate us necessarily to the entire full price tag that you've estimated, largely because we don't have the plans yet?
Correct.
Yeah, no, that was just conceptual?
Right.
You know, we had quite a discussion on the parking, and again, that was just conceptual?
Just for myself, when I see numbers that big, I just like, want to make that clear.
If I can comment, when I, I'm not going to try to influence or direct council on how to act, but what I like about this is, folks who bought in that development, were told they would have a park, and that's been out there for eight years, 10 years, they don't have a park. I made the comment at our workshop, families buy with kids because there's going to be a park, by the time the park gets built, the kids are grown and gone. I like the idea, if, if this comes together, I like the idea of the fact that that original park, and I'm more focused on that 6.4 acres, 6.8?
Yes, 6.4.
6.4 acres, I'm more focused on that getting developed for the people that bought houses and they're expecting to park. I think the opportunity for the ball fields on the north end is wonderful, but my primary focus would be to get, by doing this, facilitating then staff to build out that original park, so that's, that's what I like about the whole project.
When you said that the people who bought there were promised a park, promised them a park, we did?
No, 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 I'm saying, when they bought, it was in the plans, there would be a park there, and I understand that it's not up to the city to put that in.
Right, I was just, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that, that we had not...
My point is, too often, you get folks, developers who will build everything, build all the houses, not the amenities. I like the fact that this might allow us then to get that park in there.
The one thing on that too is, from our standpoint, is it allows us to ensure that the park is going to meet our standards. The irrigation's going to be set to our standards, the turf, the things that we do really well is the, till at build-out, yes, it's a, it's a lot of money. I don't think it's an unreasonable amount, when you look at everything going in, it just unfortunately, it costs money. As we do a design, if it's, if we've come to an agreement that's agreeable to you folks, then we do our design. From there, we will look at the phasing of it. Obviously, just level fields is the cheapest, but we also have to look at what will bring in some revenue, what will offset, what will meet some of those needs of the city and the residents, so...
Dave, will any of those future plans, I'm going to ask a question, I know the answer, but let's ask it. Will any of those future plans, development design, come back to council for approval prior to?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, all park plans, the final plans will go back to the council. They have to.
Ellen, oh, I'm sorry, Linda.
I, I have a question, what is the timeframe to finish out what is there, the park that's there? For the, if the city takes it, what's the timeframe?
The Tolemore Park?
Yeah.
Yeah, we would start construction next summer, so I would hope that we have it completed by the winter.
Well, that would make those people happy that have just, like the mayor said, purchased property there, knew that they were going to get a park, or thought they were, and it's kind of been held up for what seems like forever to me, but...
Yeah, of course, the economy crashed.
A lifetime of a kid has gone by.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Any other questions, comment?
I just think it's a great idea. We've talked, sports complex for, geez, early 90s that I know of, and always something happens that makes it just not quite happen. Once we get the land, I know that we will find ways, we have the impact fees, that's what they're for, that allow us to move forward and start putting the project together. Until that lands in place, it's just kind of this idea hanging out there. I think the land takes it from an idea to something real. So, a golden opportunity for the Tolemore people to get their park put in at the same point, to allow us to have that land and start planning for the future, so I, I think it's a great idea.
Benin?
I was just going to say the same thing, I've seen that where that's going to be, and it's absolutely, those people, if I lived there, I'd be pushing for that, and for that Tolemore Park, and it's a great location, a great idea, I'm 100% for it.
Thank you, Benin. Ellen?
I guess I have two questions, totally unrelated, but one, anybody can answer this, once that property that we swapped for, property that's up at Prairie, is it only going to be good for, for a softball field, or is it going to be land that we could use for a lot of different things? I mean, if we got in a pinch and we needed to sell it, would we be able to sell it as, you know, a future subdivision?
Okay. I guess that would depend on how the, the deeds are written up from the developer, so if it's free and clear, yes. You would still have to go through the process of declaring land surplus and that, that whole process.
You lost me.
Could be deed restricted, so in other words, if they, if they're going to transfer or exchange property with us, they could have something in the deed that would preclude that from becoming anything other than a ball field.
Okay.
Mr. Cafferty, is that correct?
Correct. I would presume that the city would acquire it without those restrictions as part of the determination.
Yeah. So I guess my point is this, kind of to Joe's point, I'd love to see the ball fields. But if we get in a pinch, we're gonna be putting out hard dollars, taxpayer dollars, to finish a park in a subdivision that we're really technically not responsible for. So I'd like to at least say to the citizens that, you know what, push comes to shove, we're at least gonna have this piece of land that we could sell off and recoup our money. I'd still like to see it be a softball field, but I just wanna make sure that we would have the opportunity to at least recoup the money that we're putting into Tullamore, 'cause otherwise, we're gonna have another group of people in here going, why are you spending taxpayer money on a park that's supposed to be done by a developer?
Just one clarification, and it's semantics, but the money we plan to use to develop both sites will be impact fees, so they are dedicated funds.
Doesn't matter. We're not, that's still taxpayer money, right?
Yes.
So that the developers really supposed to spend their own money to develop the park, right? Neither here nor there. My point is, number one, I'd like to make sure that if we do this land swap, that that land is available for us to do whatever we want with it, not just put a softball field on it. The other question that comes to mind, and again, anybody can jump up and answer this. What do we gotta do to ensure that these developers, and I know we went through the economy changes and stuff like that, but you know, when I sat on planning and zoning, it drove me crazy too. What can we do to hold them accountable to finish these projects as they bring these beautiful colored pages to us and say, look at this great thing we're gonna do for your city? And here we are, this many years later, going, we don't even have a park yet. Is there anything that we can do to hold their feet to the fire a little bit? Or to make them, as the property sells, the money goes into a trust that then we can somehow control to make sure that some of these amenities are finished, the way they're drawn up?
We have discussed that and this, I'm speaking as, for myself.
Okay.
So I'm sure I'll be corrected by legal and planning and zoning and everybody else, but you know, in Dave's world.
That's where we're at right now.
All right.
Scary place.
Wonder things don't make sense.
I think the first thing is, when we accept parkland or a park area, we have it dedicated to the city immediately. I could name a number of parks that are out there that we don't have the land yet. We have a promise. The second thing is to front-load it so that the park, if we're gonna work with the developer, the developer has to get that at the start, not halfway down the project or at the end of their development. I understand that, you know, they're selling the lots and building and making their money to pay for it. Maybe part of it is, we look at that it goes to the city first and we look at what our impact fees, those are adjusted, and we simply do the full construction. And we have control that way.
You know, Alan, good points. Number one, the point on an unrestricted deed for the property because the developer who's proposing the trade had stated that one of the reasons they want, they would like to see the ball fields out there is it's gonna be out towards a commercial area, which will lend help with the economic vitality of that. So they may in fact want it to be deed restricted. So you bring up a very good point. The second issue I think is very pertinent is Shelley and I had lunch with the developer yesterday, whose position has been, I'm putting in the amenities first, that's gonna help me sell the properties. And I agree, I wish there was some way and maybe we can look at doing that, but you know, you don't want it to be onerous as far as prohibiting them from doing what they do, but by the same token, it would be nice to get some of those amenities in early. So I appreciate you mentioning that.
Well, I think that every time we've had a subdivision, a PUD, a planned unit development, we have always asked the developer, as a council and as Planning and Zoning Commission, if we could have the amenities in the first phase. We've, a lot of us have brought that up over the years and it just seems to be that somehow they talk us out of that. I mean, they've talked us out of it in almost every instance where we can't do that in the first phase, but by the time we get to phase three, then we'll go ahead and put the park in. Now, the changes in the market, I think, for just for people who might not know this, that's part of the reason that Tullamore has went like it has. I mean, the change in the market, the loss of the land from the original developer, and there is a park out there. It's not that there isn't a park out there, it's there, it's just grass. So, you know, just kind of explaining if somebody is misunderstanding.
The one thing I would like to point out on Tullamore, because we had a design that had already been approved by council, we had a lot of detail, obviously with bankruptcy, a change in ownership and everything else, but it gave us a lot of leverage to go back in and negotiate. So when it does come before the council and there is any time lag in there, the more detail that's down, the better it is for us, 'cause we're not going back five or six years later and saying, well, this is what we thought, and they're saying, no, no, no. So.
I do have a question for Mr. Cafferty.
Go ahead.
Because we ran into this with the light, as far as requiring a developer to do certain things. Is, what I'm proposing, is this thing, is this outside the?
No, you can condition your approvals. The problem, and I think Councilmember Wilhelm stated it best, I mean, there's financial realities. If you front-load it too much, you don't get anything. And there are certain realities, certain people have the means to take those issues up at the front end, but they're shouldering the risk versus you shouldering the risk. And, I mean, I haven't been here to experience it, but I've seen it happen in other places where you want to front-load it, and that's probably not the best way to say it. You want to have these guarantees, you're going to timely receive the promises that were given to you, but you get talked out of it. And sometimes you have to stand by your guns. The issue on forty-one was different, though. I mean, that's on a state highway, you don't have the right to put a traffic light on the state highway. The state has control over the state highways. And so, kind of a side issue, but I understood where you were going with it. And so, it's a fine line balance on how to get it, but you can direct staff, you can go through at the hearing, we'd like this upfront, or we want some, to tie the different phases together or things like that.
I just want us to have a memory of some of the issues that we're dealing with now as we go into the future and realize that we don't always get what's on the pretty picture, so.
Russ, did you hear the intent or the wishes of council as to what we would like to see as we get developments coming forward in the future?
Yes, yes.
If there's a way to work it out, I think it's a great idea to consider.
And so, are you looking for a motion here, Mayor?
Do we need a motion to proceed?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I would make a motion to move forward with the acquisition of the land for the softball complex, provided that there are no deed restrictions in those documents.
Motion second. Further discussion? Shannon, please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Hisong?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Dave, as that comes forward, there was, during the workshop, there was talk as to what the developers would be responsible for as far as improvements, et cetera. So could you keep council appraised on that as we go forward?
That will be part of that development agreement, so we will list out everything and as much details we can, exactly what we're getting and what's the expectation for us. Thank you very much. And as Councilman Hisong pointed out, it's been a long time, I had dark hair back then. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I didn't.
Next item up is Trinity Group Homes Homes Community Development Block Grant application, and I understand you're going to be the gentleman presenting today.
And Mr. Mayor, just quickly to disclose to everyone, Trinity Group Homes came forward and requested us to, the city to sponsor the community development block grant. At that time, they were not associated with Saint Vincent de Paul of Cord Lane. Since that time, they're being acquired by Saint Vincent de Paul and going to merge underneath them. I am on the board for Saint Vincent de Paul, also I'm a finance committee member for Saint Vincent de Paul.
So Shelley, as you saw via her email, is declaring a conflict and is not presenting, and we're going to defer to Jason.
Yeah, thank you. Trinity Group Homes approached the city to sponsor the community development block grant for a few repairs that they want to make on the complex. Since it is block grant money, has to flow through the city, they can't receive the funds directly, and so they had a list, I believe it's about forty thousand dollars worth of repairs, various here and there. We wanted to wait, if council did give the approval, to wait till the transition happened from Trinity Group Homes to Saint Vincent's. So there were some timing issues there. So do they have to have a, do they require a motion to seek the?
Well, let's see if there's comments first and then we'll go from there, if that's all right. Anybody have comments on this? Linda?
I have a comment. The city currently doesn't have a policy on who we will sponsor and who we won't sponsor on these community block grants. I feel like we need to have a policy that would spell out the requirements so that the council could evaluate and see if, whether or not we want to sponsor the grant. Since the city is, as Councilwoman Thorson pointed out at our last meeting, the city is on the hook for these grants if they default. So it would be, I mean, I would like the mayor to ask staff to bring back a policy for us to look at. In the meantime, with this grant proposal, I would suggest that Trinity, that Saint Vincent comes back, once the transition has been made, that they come back, that we have a policy, so that everybody is on the same page. And I think the reasons that we should do that is because the city is liable, number one, that we need to know that we're not discriminating against any group, and if we have a policy, we'll be able to put that together, all of us, and decide if that is true. And then, you know, just make sure that we are not going to have a loss in the future for non-compliance, 'cause it's all on the city.
Right.
So that would be my suggestions. I don't know what anybody else thinks.
Was, any further discussion, was that a motion?
I got a question.
Well, let's, hang on one sec, we'll go down here and then Skip will come back to you.
Oh, Skip's good, you can go.
No, go ahead.
Is there, is there, is timing an issue in this?
There, we were looking online to see when they, because they initially had a push, and we had thought that there was four different times during the year that they could apply for this particular type of grant. And I think you were able to find there was only one.
November twentieth, I believe.
Yeah. November twentieth is the time, yeah.
So they would have to reapply for next year, they wouldn't, they would not be able to apply for this year.
Okay.
Is that okay, Alan?
Yeah, go ahead, Skip.
My concern, if it was Saint Vincent de Paul coming forward, I wouldn't have much concern. I don't think we would be putting the city and the taxpayers at any risk. Trinity Homes, I don't know enough about them to say that cavalier, so I would like to see them either come back under the auspices of Saint Vincent de Paul.
Sure, okay.
If we say yes tonight, can we say no tomorrow night? They go ahead and apply, and nothing has happened with Saint Vincent de Paul prior to the block grant being awarded, do we have a chance to back out at that point? Did I make any sense whatsoever?
Yeah, that does make sense, yeah.
Oh, sort of. But that's as good as it's gonna get for me.
But the point is, there are questions surrounding it.
Yeah, I'm concerned about the liability of the city with the one group, only because I'm not aware of them to any great extent, and Saint Vincent de Paul, I would feel very comfortable with.
One goes back to, I think, the suggestion the Council President Wilhelm had, and that was that we want to make sure that, you know, we do not discriminate against anyone, that we have, and if we have a policy that we could adhere to, that would enable us then to make sure we're on the straight and narrow as we move forward. Any further discussion?
I agree with that. I think what Linda's proposing is the right way to go. You know, again, if it's not a big deal to put this off, I'd rather see us put it off until there's a policy or something like that in place. I just.
All right, I also concur. I think a policy is necessary, 'cause this is not something that's come before the city very much. And in the case that it has, you know, we've already got an interest in it, we own the property and at the senior center. So this is the first one where we've just kind of got no interest in it already to start with, and they're asking us to back a grant. And without any kind of policy in place, one, then you're just, what standards is this meeting? Two, it kind of opens us up to back grants for everybody and their brother who, as a nonprofit, wants to do improvements. And I think we need to go into this a little more carefully with a more calculated idea of where we're going. And so, I would agree with Linda and everybody else that's spoken, we need a policy first.
Okay, all right.
Well, the concern I had, you know, we've done the one, and we ran into a situation where we had to get legal input. So the city, we have not billed for it, will not bill for it, but we've incurred some not inexpensive, but good, legal advice. Trying to give you, throw you a bone before you head out. But no, we've had to engage council to make sure that we were doing things right and we could do it. And that's something I think a policy would address, so I would tend to concur. Do we need a motion so indicating, or with consensus that has been given tonight, are we good to go?
You have a request before you to sponsor it. My takeaway from the discussion is that you're not going to sponsor it as presented, but you would be willing to entertain it once you establish a protocol for evaluating that?
Okay.
I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth.
No, I think that's accurate.
It so will. That's why you get paid the big bucks.
Go moved.
Good job. Motion second. I'm sure Shannon got every bit of that.
I can't get in trouble for that.
Further discussion? All those, go ahead, you have a question, John?
No, after you have.
All of them, or, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Hisong?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Mr. Cafferty?
At the commencement of this issue, Ms. Endurud disclosed that she had a conflict. I did evaluate that, and she would not have a conflict going forward on this, assuming for discussion purposes, that Saint Vincent were to be taking over this Trinity Group Homes. And so I would just want to make that clear. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, preferably not on the record, 'cause it's attorney-client privilege until you waive it. But I just wanted to make clear on the record that she should be allowed to, under my interpretation, participate in this so as to avoid any confusion if anyone was looking and thought that she had a conflict, so.
Okay. So, I want to make sure I got, I listened to the motion that was so eloquently stated. We are going to deny the request at this point and direct staff to bring back a policy that would address these issues in the future. And I just want to make sure that that was included in the way it was stated.
I'm sure it was.
Perfect, okay. Just wanted to make sure we had both sides.
That was my understanding, yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank you all very much for the input. Next item up, ordinances and resolutions, we have none. Administrative staff reports, police department plans for the substation west end of town. Chief.
Mayor, council, good evening again. Wanted to take just a little bit of time and update you on a, an idea that we have for a substation. We have been talking about a substation since we were working on our strategic plan in 2012. One of the things that we recognized is, as the community grows, so does our need to ensure that we're continuing to use our resources properly. And one of the things that was put into the strategic plan that was passed in February of 2013 under Safe Community is the police department evaluating the need for a west side police substation. So we've been doing that, we've met with a number of business owners on the west end of town, and I think we have a good plan for you tonight for consideration. First of all, I want to talk a little bit about why we need it, where we're proposing it, how we pay for it, those type of things. Number one, I think the reason that we need it is community growth. As this city grows, so does our response time. When this community was much smaller, we could be somewhere in a couple of minutes. Now, as the city has expanded, it can take us a substantial amount of time to get from one side of the city to the other. So it increases the need for something on the west side of town. We've also seen an increase in police assistant requests, assistance requests on the west side of town because of that continued growth. So there certainly is a need for something out there. The where part of it, as you all know, we have a great partnership with Cootney County Fire and Rescue. We really cherish our partnership, we work very well together, and this is another example of where I think we can come together and save the taxpayers. I've met with Chief Merritt, he's offered to allow us to use Station Two out on the west side of town to use as a substation. uh, to, uh, to use as a substation. That's on Seltice, and it's just west of Pleasant View, uh, to give you a little bit of direction there. They have office space available. The utilities are already in place, uh, so there would be no cost for the bricks and mortar portion of this substation. So that's a, a real benefit. What would it cost? Uh, we estimate the cost to be just under $11,000 for a one-time cost to put computers out there and phones, computer software, and telephone, and those type of things. The ongoing cost, we think, would be very minimal. Obviously, as time goes on, if these computers need batteries, you know, if, if the phones were out, there may be some minimal cost to continue to maintain the operation out there, but it would be very minimal cost. How do we pay for it? Uh, we, we were approached by the Idaho Green Foundation about three months ago, and they came to us, as well as the other law enforcement entities in the area, with the idea of a law enforcement or a police rest stop. And that's a term that is, uh, starting to become popular in some of the larger communities. Portland has been using a police rest stop for quite some time, and the mission, I listed it there, it's to bridge our community and those sworn to protect and serve it by hosting a safe place for renewal for officers. And the concept is that faith-based organizations or nonprofit organizations would provide a location that officers could go to throughout their shift to, um, complete some paperwork, use the telephone, sort of recharge. It would be staffed with food and, and beverages, that kind of stuff, for the officers, at the expense of the faith-based organizations or nonprofit. We decided against that, but decided to, to take that concept and turn it into more of a substation concept, so that our officers still had a safe location to go to, um, someplace that they didn't have to drive all the way back to the police department to complete their, uh, their paperwork. And the Green Foundation has, uh, agreed to that, and has agreed to fully fund the initial startup cost of, uh, putting this, um, substation together. So there would be no taxpayer dollars used to, uh, fund the substation. It would be fully funded by the Green Foundation. Some of the benefits that I see are a safe location for our officers to go and complete paperwork and come, not have to come all the way back to the station. Uh, it's not our plan to staff this 24 hours. That's not the intent of the substation. The intent is, again, for a location for the officers to go make some phone calls, do their paperwork. There may be times by appointment where officers would meet with, uh, citizens that maybe live on that west side, and it's convenient for them to come out there, but our intent is not to staff that on a 24-hour basis. We would assign a supervisor to be responsible for that and go out there on a daily basis and check, and make sure that everything's being kept up and, and, uh, meeting the fire department's expectations, but it wouldn't be, um, staffed all the time. The other, uh, benefits are improved response time to the west side, efficiency is improved, and, uh, it provides a location for community members to meet with officers, again, only by appointment. So, pretty simple. Uh, that's the, uh, concept that we are, have been working on. But I wanted to bring it to you and make sure that I have your concurrence on the concept of moving forward.
First of all, I'd like to, uh, congratulate both the PD and Cootney County Fire and Rescue for the working relationship you have and the way you extend help to each other. Chief, thank you for, uh, Fire District's willingness to help out. I think it's a great idea. I, I like the fact that it helps, if you will, allocate some additional time out there. It does make it more convenient and which would save the taxpayers in the long run, because you're not running back into the station. So, uh, I think it's a wonderful idea, and I thank you both for coming up with a thought on that.
Thank you.
Go.
So the, the initial costs are, are not being borne by the taxpayers, correct?
That's correct.
In theory, this ought to save some mileage on some cars, too, because they're, they can respond to the west side out of that office rather than out of the, the main police station, right? So, you're saving the taxpayers' money, providing shorter lead to, uh, shorter response times. Is there, is there any downside to this at all whatsoever?
Probably not.
You know, I've, I've thought a little bit about that. I don't see a downside. I, I think, you know, what could happen, if I were to throw a worst-case scenario out there, as the city continues to grow, as the fire department grows, they start to staff that building, and then they can no longer host us, and then I'm standing before you saying, hey, we need to come up with another idea for a substation. But I think that's many years out, and I, I think for right now, for the next two to three years, I think this is a great, great option.
We can jump off that bridge when we get to it. I love it.
Yeah.
Skip?
One question, Chief. What took you so long to come up with it? I mean, 10 years ago, you could have been doing this, or five, or whatever. But no, it's a superb idea. It's, it's great. You and the, the chief, uh, your relationship is wonderful. It's helped this community in so many ways, so move forward.
Thank you.
I would just like to applaud Chief Hoag for finding money. Does an outstanding job for our community and for the police department in particular, of finding this money to pay for things, and I just, makes it so much easier to move on and build more streets where we don't have to do that, so I applaud you for...
Yeah, thank you, and, and I just want to say thank you to the Green Foundation. They, they're the ones that stepped up and said, hey, how can we help? And it's, you know, we live in a great community, and it's great to see, uh, that kind of support, so anyways, thank you.
Chief, will you come back, uh, several months down the road, just give us an update as to what you've seen out there and what kind of impact it's had?
I will. You bet.
Appreciate it.
So what is, what is the reason that the Green Foundation wants to do this? What's in it for them?
Well, the, the Green Foundation provides, they're a nonprofit organization. They provide donations to a variety of different, um, community programs. And this year, they wanted to do something for law enforcement. I think they've seen what's happening nationwide, uh, many times the disrespect that's happening for law enforcement, uh, law enforcement. And so they said, you know what, this year, we want to provide a donation to law enforcement. So they're gonna provide a donation to post falls, but they're also going to put a, uh, police rest stop, as I understand it, in the Court Lane area, too. Uh, they wanted us to partner in that, but it, it's not something that we can take advantage of. We can't have our officers over in Court Lane using something like this, so we asked to have something here. So, to answer your question specifically, I, I don't see any real benefit for them, other than just helping the community.
Okay. Do you need a motion?
I don't believe that I do. I just wanted to make sure I presented it and that everyone was on board.
Thank you. Great idea.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Great idea.
Next item up is Norway maple trees on the City Hall campus. Mr. Hill?
Mayor, members of council, thanks for letting me present tonight. I know it's been a long evening, and, uh, I appreciate it. I'll try to make it short and sweet. Just want to talk briefly about some upcoming removals of large trees here on the City Hall campus, just as a matter of notification, so that nobody's surprised when they show up and they're gone. Uh, we have some, uh, trees here that are in decline. Uh, you can see the yellow and red dots on the aerial photo there. The yellow dots are the trees that we'll be discussing, uh, mostly tonight, and they show the most advanced signs of decline. And, um, so I'd like to show you some photos, talk a little bit about the condition of the trees, why we think they're in the condition that they're in, and then talk a little bit about the removal and replacement of those trees. We suspect that, uh, that the decline began at the, at the time of construction of this building in the Fourth Street or Fourth Avenue Improvement Project. Uh, construction damage on trees can lead to, um, a lot of dieback deadwood and, uh, reduced vigor of the trees, and ultimately, uh, the death of the trees. And we think that's exactly what we're, we're experiencing right now. I have some photos here. These photos are from 2009. Um, it's my understanding that the lion's share of the construction on these projects happened in 2008. Um, this is, this is a deadwood removal pruning of the trees in question. And there was another subsequent deadwood removal. You can, hopefully in the photo, you can see some of the tip dieback and, uh, um, general nature of the tree. Here's another one also from 2009. I apologize about the glare.
Why do we have that glare tonight?
Um, so construction damage on trees manifests itself largely in the root zone of the trees. Um, soil compaction and mechanical damage to the roots themselves during construction can often lead to stress that can't be overcome easily by trees, particularly mature trees. And it can be a several-year process for this decline to advance to the point where the trees need to be removed. So let's fast forward now to 2014, just last summer. And these are mature Norway maple trees. The canopy density of the tree should be almost opaque. And you can see that these trees are approaching 50% opacity. And that's a, that's a sure sign of decline. Also, in 2014, we noticed, uh, some smaller scaffold branches breaking and falling from the trees as a result of the brittle nature of the wood. 2015, so this is just this summer, tip dieback has advanced even farther into even larger branches. And particularly in that photo, you can see where some of those larger dead branches are located above sidewalks and other public areas. So, for, for these reasons and because I don't think it's worth investing any more time, effort, or money into saving these trees, uh, we've decided to remove these trees. Um, I recommend that we remove the trees sooner rather than later, hopefully before we, we get to the high winds that we experience in the fall and in the winter. We do plan to replace the trees. Obviously, they'll be small nursery trees, and it may take many years for them to grow to this maturity, this, this canopy size. But we do plan to replace them with very similarly, um, sized trees. And what I mean is mature-sized trees, class III trees, with a ma- mature height of 50, 50 feet or more. We did go out to bid for the removal of these trees, and the bids that we received were anywhere from $4,500 to $7,500. Uh, so because of the excessive cost, we are, we have decided to do the removals in-house with urban forestry and park staff. Uh, we expect the replacement of the trees to cost somewhere between $1,000 and $1,200. It's about as quick as I can make it. I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Preston. Appreciate the information. See you, Nun.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I had one.
Great.
When you said to re- are they replacing them?
Yes.
How, how large are trees, how mature of trees are you going to put out there?
We would like to go with something just a little bit larger, and, and when I say a little bit larger, um, nursery trees are measured by caliper, which is diameter of trunk.
Right.
Generally speaking, we plant one and a half-inch diameter tree, which can be anywhere from 10 feet to 15 feet tall. Uh, we'd like to go with something more like two inch on these trees. Now, that's anywhere from 15 to 20 feet tall. Still a very small tree, uh, but just a little bit larger.
Are you going with the Norway maples again?
I think, we haven't, we haven't decided on particular species just yet. I, I'm partial to oak trees, um, so I think, uh, we, we certainly don't have to go with all the same species. Uh, sugar maple, I also am a fan of, so, uh, we're gonna talk about that in parks and see what fits in, and what, what, what is aesthetically pleasing.
Well, duly note that Counselor Thorson would like to see at least one Norway maple out there.
Noted.
Thank you very much, Preston. Next item up is mayor comments. We have a couple. Congratulations to Finance Director Jason Faulkner and the Finance Department for receiving the GFO Way Awards for the CAFR and the PAFR. This is the 17th consecutive year the city has received the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the CAFR, and the sixth year for the PAFR. The CAFR, I love acronyms, is the city's annual financial report, and the PAFR is the annual report for citizens written in non-technical terms. You'd think they'd come up with a better name for them. And Jason, I'd like to congratulate you, and let me see, 17 and 6, that means you have like 15 and 4 before you catch up with Shelley, so good work. Congratulations.
No pressure. No pressure.
No pressure, yeah. Also, we did receive a, uh, letter, uh, from some citizens, uh, and they are referencing Kathy in the Streets Department. Says, "Attention, management. Just wanted to express to you how great Kathy has been in assisting myself and my husband in getting the post-falls snow reduction program. She went above the call of duty. We consider her above average in her customer service skills. She's very patient and great on all details of your program. She would be re- she should be recognized for her outstanding performance. You are lucky to have Kathy as an employee who really cares about her position and your customers. She has, has made our lives a lot easier now. Sincerely, Janice and Mike Maris." So please pass that on to Kathy, and, uh, you know, it's just wonderful. I, I think that we continue to get comments and input like this, and verifies the fact that we have an outstanding staff. So thank you all for, to you and the folks that work for you for the job you do. Make our jobs much easier. Council comments.
I got a few.
Couple of questions. One, we got a citywide cleanup on Saturday, but they're picking up on Saturday morning. Is that correct? I thought you'd wait till after, you cleaned up everything, put it in the bin, and then pick it up like Sunday morning. Something to think about maybe next time.
Or Saturday afternoon.
Or Saturday afternoon, yeah. Uh, I guess the other question I have is, when we have the public, like we had tonight, they've got an issue, a group of people have an issue, how best can we respond to some of those issues? Because, I mean, we're sitting up here going, we know that this is a developer, you know, homeowner issue. You kind of, I felt bad that all those people left, and we didn't even have an opportunity to really address some of their concerns and answer some of their questions.
It does make us look unresponsive.
Yeah, like we don't care, and we're, I know it's, it's a done deal, but is there a way for us to respond to them somehow?
I had received a call from a citizen, one of the members, eh, excuse me, who had several questions, and I addressed those with him and suggested he, he go to the city and request the information. And I think, uh, staff, I know you were going to reach out, has staff reached out, provided that information, or let these folks know it's available?
I'm not sure if TAS has picked up that information yet or not, the public information request?
I think we, we got one.
Okay. They have not picked that up yet.
And, and I, I agree, you know, it's tough to engage them because it's citizen comment.
Right.
And you start the engagement, and I think that may have been one of the situations that was unfortunate. I think P&amp;Z did a fine job, but that happened. So it's difficult, and I think Kit said that several of those folks showed up thinking it was on the agenda. And the gentleman that called me says, well, can I get the information prior to Tuesday, prior to when you vote on it? And I said, vote on what? And I said, it's not on the agenda. There'll be no vote. Uh, and again, the information, they, they have heard what you're trying to relay to them, and I agree with what Carrie said, is, you know, you don't want to seem as unresponsive, but it's difficult, I think, if you start, uh, engaging, that it no longer becomes public comment.
Right.
And it's very difficult.
Comes to discussion, and it's...
And so again, the folks, the one, uh, gentleman that called me, I referred to the city to pick up the information that was available, because it does show the whole progression of what has transpired and the maps to support what it's been saying.
Right, the minutes in 2002, we had them in front of us today prior to this meeting, where they talked about multifamily housing and the density. And so that information was discussed in 2002, and I know that's not what the citizens are testifying to, or not what their Realtor or their developer, whoever it was that they spoke with necessarily, according to them, told them. But the information was discussed and presented at P&amp;Z and at council in 2002.
And P&amp;Z also suggested, uh, I know Ms. Ostermeyer did on a couple of occasions, that we hear what you're saying, but that's really you and the developer, you or the sales agent. So, they've heard, I, you know, I'm thinking they wanted to be heard. And, uh, again, information which would show the whole progression, and I think what Shelley said was the maps that we had today, the original map from 2002 and the map we have today of what's going on now, almost overlaying perfectly. So it was out there, but again, it's, if there is an issue, uh, it wasn't the city's part, and we would have a difficult time doing anything on it now, because we'd be, I think, exposing the city to a lawsuit from the developer who had it properly, went through the channels.
I agree.
But I, but I agree with you. It's tough.
Well, you have, you have another issue, which is, you have open public meeting requirements. When it's not on the agenda, you can't act on it, because potentially, um, the developer would want to be here if he knew that you were gonna be discussing his project.
Right.
And so you have that noticing that's required in advance, and the posting of your agenda for interested people to be there. And so if something's not on the agenda, while it may seem at the time a benefit, it's really a detriment to the other people who aren't there and don't have that opportunity. And so if it's not on the agenda, you can't really act upon it. And kind of to follow through with what the mayor was saying, as far as, you know, you're limited on what you can do. This decision was made back in May. It was a decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, it could have been, actions could have been taken within a certain amount of time that's now passed, so you don't even have jurisdiction over this. You, you would lack the authority to act upon this at this point in time. And so I think where the mayor was stating earlier is the best thing that you can do, which is direct them to staff, let them know that, you know, there's documents out there that, a remedy, well, not remedy, but evidence this earlier plan for this area, and some of the comments from the public reference that, you know. We knew that it was gonna be there, but we thought maybe it wouldn't. And different people, I'm sure, receive different information. Different people remember different things. It's human nature. We don't, we don't all see the same thing. And so it is just one of those where they wanted to be heard, but you can't act upon it, because it would be a violation of the law. to be heard, but you can't act upon it because it would be a violation of the law.
And one of their elected officials, as he said, at the homeowner association, I believe is one, is the gentleman, or if he has not, he will be requesting all that information.
He, he did. The TAS who was here tonight has requested.
So in theory, they're elected official, if you want to say that, now has the information that they, that should hopefully explain things to them.
You know, I have a question for you. When you introduce citizen comments, I'm trying to hear what it is that, you know, I know there's a verbiage that you say. Is how you introduce that, do you ever say, do we ever say, we cannot engage or discuss? That we can't? Because this is maybe only the second or third time since I've been on the council that it was just really hard, that I just wanted to tell them, it's not that we are unconcerned, it's just out of our hands.
It does state in there that any item requiring council action must be placed on an agenda of an upcoming council meeting, except for emergency circumstances. So that's a close.
It might, it might be a good idea, though, if, if the, if you, if, when you're introducing it, or whoever's introducing it, that kind of explains to, especially when you have a big group, sort of that in layman's terms, so that they understand, we're not just sitting here, you know, we're paying attention to what they say, but we have a legal obligation not to converse with them about it. So we, we really are bound not to. And maybe if they understood that, if the public understood that, they would walk away with a little bit different feeling. And I think it'd make all of us feel better. It would make me feel better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One other question, maybe for Russ.
Can you fix that before you leave?
As far as our, as far as our notice process, because that seemed to be a real issue with this, with this group specifically, how are they noticed if, if there were a change? Did we actually just put something in the paper? They said something about, something on the, on our website?
Homeowners within 300 feet.
Basically, what they're saying is if they don't go looking for it, they're never going to know that something's happening. So how do we notice people if we are going to make a, a zone change? Do we go out and stick something on the?
Yeah.
A notice is. In this instance, though, there were no homes there, so there was no one to notify when this was approved back in 2002.
Right, right. And they made it seem like this is something that's been, that's changed since 2002. And I know it's not, but.
Yeah. Typically, we, we put a notice in the paper for all public hearings, and we notify people within 300 feet of the, of the property. And so they're required, when they come in, to provide us a title report versus if they own the property, and provide a, a report of all the names of the landowners within that 300-foot distance. And then we do a legal ad in the paper.
Russ, don't we also post some kind of signage?
And we do. We post, we post a sign on site, on the property as well.
And you, they receive mailed notice if they're within that 300 feet. So those people that are closest receive that additional notice?
Okay.
John?
Just want to add that the apartment project bill was a final PUD. In final PUDs, you don't do the 300-foot radius. So that's where I believe they've got the impression that the, they're misinformed or, you know, they weren't getting noticed. But as part of the final PUD, it goes just before P&amp;Z because it's presumed that the burden of the public process was incurred as part of the preliminary PUD.
In 2002.
Right. And that's where the public hearings come in. So if there's a public hearing process, the notices come into play. Final stage, as John said, doesn't require that sort of notification, because essentially the property has already been through a public process. Now, this project in itself has been through a couple of different public processes. On Phase Three, for example, there was another public hearing before council in 2004. In, in all the different phases, this is numerous phases this project has been through. The development plan has essentially stayed the same. And as the mayor stated earlier, if you look at the original plan and you look at the aerial photo now, they're essentially the same. There's, it's one of those projects that has been built out. Now, it does take time, and I think over time, when you have a large number of residences built in an area that weren't there at the original approval, there's always going to be some, some element of, well, we didn't know, or, or we weren't, we weren't informed.
And the difficult part of that is, as several of them stated, both P&amp;Z and then again tonight, is they were told something different. Well, that's not the city. And I mean, I appreciate what you're saying, but we have to be careful. Have to be careful because what they are told and what's represented to them, you know, if they came in, and I know they say they won't do it, but if they came in and looked at the records, it would show that was going to be multifamily. So it's, it's a tough situation.
Yeah.
So.
Well, and sometimes they hear what they want to hear versus what they were actually told. I, you know, dealt with this several times over the years. And then the realtors would say, you know, we, we don't make a statement about what's going to happen in a particular piece of property. We don't know for sure. It can change down the road.
Well, that's interesting, too. And I think it was Deborah telling us that some of the posts that were on the online, online posts, after the article came out, stated, well, we bought and we knew it was going to be there. So, you know, you get both sides. So it's tough. Difficult situation.
And I think it's important to mention, too, that the original traffic studies that would, that were associated with the preliminary PUD plan evaluated a potential of 300 multifamily residential units as part of that study and evaluation, and found that the transportation system, as it was approved or as, as it, as it was, met the requirements to provide for that density.
Thanks, Russ. Al, is that it?
Yeah, I'm good.
Anybody else?
No.
No? I would entertain, we do, it's not a touchscreen, is it?
I'm going old school.
We do not need an executive session?
We do not.
Our next motion would be?
Your.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.